I don't know why, I don't know how to switch.
Good evening. I call the Planning Commission meeting of October 23rd, 2023 to order at 6:31 PM. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Reynolds.
Present.
Vice Chair Almond. Commissioner Coronado.
Here.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Neely. Commissioner Radulovich. Commissioner Santana. Chair, we have quorum.
Alright, thank you. Please stand, if you can, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I have not seen any changes to the agenda, so it is approved as presented. We do have one set of minutes to be approved, so I would call for a motion and second for the September 25th, 2023 minutes.
I move to approve based on clerk's certification, the September 25th, 2023 regular meeting minutes of the Littleton Planning Commission.
Second.
Was that Coronado?
Yes. Alright, we have a motion and a second, and I will see if our voting device is working. It appears all the votes are in.
You have to close it out or something. The vote.
Six in favor, the motion carries.
Could you hear me?
Yes, thank you. If you wish to address the Planning Commission under public comment, please sign in on the public speaker form before the call to order for this meeting. Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions regarding issues that are not a part of the public hearings on tonight's agenda. A separate opportunity will be provided for comment for any public hearing item. Each speaker during this general public comment session is limited to three minutes. We expect comments to be civil, and disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. This board is not authorized under Colorado Open Meetings law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not a part of tonight's agenda. We have zero speakers signed up to speak during the public comments section, and looking in the audience, I do see we have people in attendance. Is there anybody who did not sign up who would like to speak during this time period? Seeing none, we'll move to general business. There being no general business, the next item, or the next section, is the public hearing this evening, which is for PC Resolution 09-2023 approving a conditional use to permit the construction of a 60-foot tower in the Corridor Mixed Zone District located at 711 East County Line Road. We shall start with the staff presentation.
Thank you Chair Reynolds, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mike Sutherland. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development. Thank you for the fine summary, Chair Reynolds. I will turn the staff presentation over to Andrea Vaughn and introduce Andrea Vaughn, planer two for the city of Littleton.
Good evening, Commission, and I am here tonight to discuss the conditional use permit known as CDU 23-0002. This is an applicant request for approval of the conditional use for a wireless communication facility tower. This application was reviewed under Title 10 of the Unified Land Use Code zoning regulations. For a bit of context, the site you can see here on this screen, and it is highlighted in blue, it is located on East Phillips Avenue and East County Line Road. The property is about 2.26 acres and currently has one existing building, which is not subject to this review. I would like to note that the parcel is surrounded by, there is residential to the north and the east of the parcel, as well as commercial mixed to the west, but just as a note, the proposed tower is actually located at the southwest portion of the parcel, and the entirety of the parcel is not subject to this review. The applicant proposes to replace an existing wood cellular tower, which is 36 feet, with a new 60-foot metal cellular tower. As a note, the maximum height in the commercial mixed zone district is 80 feet. Per the ULUC, towers may be constructed to the height permitted in the zone district, and that height is for commercial buildings. Staff believes that allowing the tower to become taller also allows for the co-location of other antennas and minimizes the need for more towers in this area. Staff believes that this meets the decision criteria for approval of a conditional use, as we believe that it provides a necessary use. Impacts to adjacent properties have been minimized, as well as detrimental impacts have been mitigated. It is staff's recommendation to approve the PC Resolution number 092023. Thank you. And I believe our applicant, Richard Gaeta, has a presentation for you guys as well.
Alright, thank you. We will hear from the applicant then.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'll try and keep this brief. I know you guys have done a lot of cell towers in the past, so you probably have a lot of experience, so I won't rehash a lot of things. But I just kind of want to hit the high points here. Let's see if the clicker works. There we go. The project, you know, scope of work for this project is really to improve the communications for AT&amp;T in this area, and especially on the 470 corridor. While the coverage is somewhat existing there, we need to improve it, and we also need to address capacity issues. As everyone's aware, more and more people are on the phones nowadays. They stay on them, and the cell tower can only do so many phone calls at one time. So when that capacity is reached, calls don't get connected as people are going down 470 or wherever they're traveling. So again, the 470 corridor is the main emphasis here. The scope of work, like planning staff said, is to replace a existing wooden pole that has a structural capacity to only have three antennas on it right now, and I'll get more into depth of that. And we do want to build this for the future. We listened to what the planning staff said about co-location and how it's important to the city of Littleton, and so we've taken that into account. Just a quick photo simulation of the existing towers on the left, and the new proposed tower is on the right. The top, let me work my way up. The antennas on the new proposed tower is the existing equipment that is on the wooden tower now. Those would just move over at the same height to the new tower, and then AT&amp;T will be located on the top of the tower. You see there's a big gap there, and that's our future co-location locations for the other carriers when they decide to locate. And we do have, I will say, we do have a lot of interest in that. I can't release names, but there is one carrier that's very interested in locating on this tower, besides AT&amp;T. Again, it's an increase from a 36-foot to a 60-foot tower. The space on the ground is currently 35 by 36 feet. That will not change. We are able to include the equipment that's already there, plus AT&amp;T's equipment, plus a future carrier's equipment within the existing compound. That compound, for your information, is enclosed by a wooden fence, so again, that area will not change. The AT&amp;T lease, this is the copy of the existing lease area without, and that little square at the bottom of the checkered lattice area is the existing tower, wooden tower, and you can see the large open spaces. With the new tower, that we move over a little bit, and AT&amp;T will be taking up a 15 by 20 lease area with a 12 by 12 pad, concrete pad, on which a 10 by 10 building will be constructed. It's a modular building, one of those prefab buildings that they bring in. So for us, this is really necessitated by a couple of things. This need for this tower is. One is the coverage. Two is the capacity issues, and why this tower, this height is because we need to get above the trees, we need to get up there, so that what we're trying to do is not put any more towers, build any more towers for the future. Now, I'm not going to say that's never going to happen, but we're trying, you know, to minimize that impact. And at this height, AT&amp;T believes that, you know, this addresses their needs for right now, and hopefully will into the future for some time. So the other problem with the existing tower is it's a wooden pole, basically. Like I said earlier, it can only locate three antennas on it. The new tower will be able to locate up to four carriers, and each carrier can traditionally have up to 12 antennas. So we're going from a boxcar to, you know, the Cadillac, if you will, as far as capacity-wise. This is what will allow us to get co-location into the future, which is important. Because if we can locate, co-locate people on this tower, that means less towers being built. And the wireless carriers, as a rule of thumb, they would prefer to locate on an existing tower for obvious reasons. One is, they can get up and running in no time at all if they're on an existing tower. So if they can go to a tower that's located, that has available rad center locations, they would much prefer to do that. And with that, I told you I'd be short and sweet. I'm going to keep to my promise. So with that, I'll answer any questions from the Commission.
Are there any questions for the applicant? We can start down here.
I suppose the first question is, there's a business right there, Willmore Garden Center. I'm assuming that they were consulted on this.
Absolutely.
And what was their opinion of this?
They're fine with the improvements.
Okay, I'm assuming this is nobody's here for that. If typically, if they had a problem, they would be here.
No, we've reached out to them multiple times. We've had multiple community meetings. We've exhausted all of the public hearings and all of those, but yeah, initially, we always go to the landlords first thing to make sure they're on board before we take the next step.
You mentioned a few times capacity and just service problems in the area. Is there any, like, quantifiable numbers or data to that that you can share with us, or like, how many calls are going through? That might be a hard thing to ask, but I'm just.
I can, and I would love to answer your question, but that's all proprietary information. I'm sorry, but they don't even tell me that. They just give me a map and says, "This is what we need." So I'd love to answer that question.
Yeah, I'd like to answer too. Another question is that I've seen things like cellphone towers sort of hidden in natural, or not natural, like buildings that are existing, like say church steebles on top of like bigger, taller buildings, things that, was that considered with this particular project?
It wasn't. Quite honestly, if we were to put up a building there of some sort, it would probably look more out of place than just increasing the size of the tower.
Yeah, I was thinking like an existing like church that had been built.
Oh, you mean at a different location?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. If we do a different location, then usually what happens is when you move a tower from one spot to another, then you've created a gap for where that tower used to be. So then we're back to square one of needing to fill that gap, so.
And suppose the last thing, I was out, I've been to Willmore before, I've been to this site several times. I did notice when I went there recently, that that cellphone tower, or that tower tends to blend in basically because of the trees kind of. That's part of the issue is that you need to get above the tree line.
Right.
And I've noticed on some of these, there's mention of a possible painting of it rather than leaving it galvanized. I mean, is there a way to paint that so it blends in a little bit better with the trees, like a brown or something like that? Or is that not possible?
It is possible, and if that's a condition, then we would welcome that condition. Thank you.
Questions at this time. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, a few questions. First of all, I saw the notes from the public meetings. It looks like there were two of them, and the first one, two folks showed up from the community, and the second one, nobody showed up. I was just wondering how folks were notified in the neighborhood?
We do a mailing that's overseen by the plant, the community development department. We have a list of who we mailed that to. They're within a certain distance of the property, of the subject property, and then, so we send those out, and that's how they get notified. There's also signage placed at the property that says, you know, "Public hearing type," like, "Community meeting type things," so.
And a newspaper notice as well.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Didn't see any objections, but didn't really see any attendance either, so not much interest in it. So I also see, you know, on the plan, it shows ice bridges, an existing one and a proposed one. I was just curious, they're not shown on the elevations. Are those at ground level, or are they at the rooftop level?
Those are, basically, what the ice bridge does is the cable that goes from the building to the tower go underneath that ice bridge, and just so that when, if there is ice on the tower and it falls, it doesn't take and hit the cable and break the cabling. That's the purpose of it, for the ice bridge. Those ice bridges are usually eight feet tall, you know. I take that back, they're usually about seven feet tall.
They wouldn't be visible above the fence?
No, no, usually they aren't.
And I had the same question as Commissioner Radulovich about the color of the pole, especially when you do the side-by-side comparison, the wood pole does blend in. I was wondering if these types of poles are constructed in weathering steel or Corten or something like that? That would be, I think visually, less obtrusive?
Usually what, if, it's a galvanized steel is what they're made out of, but if you do want them painted, that's just a layer that they add during the process of the painting, so, and it can be done.
And just to clarify, it sounds like right now the simulation shows two racks of antenna, so it could be filled in in between with additional racks, so that whole pole could be filled eventually?
Right. What we would envision is that between the top and the bottom of the antennas is 20 feet. That's enough space for two carriers. Those four carriers in the business, so.
Would that have to come back for conditional use as well, or would that just be administratively approved? This is for city staff.
I apologize. Was that question for the additional co-location of, so long as they meet the requirements for an eligible facilities request, we do have a checklist that they are required to submit with building permit. So long as they meet all the conditions on there, they can go straight to building permit. If they fall outside of those parameters, I do believe that we are back here for another conditional use permit or WCF.
Sorry. Yes, so co-location, I believe, can be done administratively, and then, over time, if antennas are replaced, that can be done administratively as well.
This would be for the placement of additional antennas in between the two that they're showing now?
Let me look that up.
Thanks. No more questions?
Is it, is it wood?
Yes. Yeah, they don't make wood poles that would support what we're needing to do here. Yeah.
Should we ask some staff questions right now as well? I was just wondering what exactly sort of triggered that this came into purview of the planning commission versus any other project with a height specifically?
It's the construction of the tower itself. Under 10-2, let me make sure I'm pulling up the accurate code section. So yes, it is 10-1-2.2 of the Wireless Communications Facility section of the code. Does state that cellular towers are subject to review of the Planning Commission. The height itself is considered, but it is noted in that section that the tower may be constructed to the height of the zone district.
And that slim duck is, is tower engineering language?
It's not mine. It is, actually, it is ATC's site, and that's how they picked the name. And if I could tell you that somehow names get picked by the weirdest ways. Yeah, I saw that one too, and I went, "I don't get asked a question about that."
I've seen these kind of towers with not just painting, I'm going to show that. I'd like to ask that question about whether you can paint or not. Sometimes they put tree-like ones on these, at least in San Diego for the fall, and they can look like pine trees. Is that comparatively expensive or a problem?
It is. It about triples. It is, it about triples the cost, and it's my understanding that the, the code allows us to have a non-camouflage tree, so that's obviously the, the preferred method. Yes. Yes, painting is just a process, you know, so.
So, yeah, I'm looking at a, a street view of a tower that's basically the intersection of C-470 and Santa Fe, if you will, or these portion of that intersection. Is that a, is that an ATC tower?
I, I couldn't tell you without, I'd have to go to my database and find that out. Sometimes it just tells you who owns it and not who's on it, so.
And I think this question will be for staff. Under the staff analysis section, it discusses, "No new towers shall be permitted unless the applicant demonstrates to the satisfaction of the city that no existing wireless communication facilities can accommodate the needs that the applicant proposes to address with its tower application." Just hoping that staff could talk a little bit about how the proposal is meeting that particular standard.
I apologize. This application came in, in two parts, and I am currently researching their wireless communications facilities application, which has, does have some of that data, if you wouldn't mind giving me just a minute to pull that up.
And while she's looking at that, I can answer a previous question. So, the co-location of antenna arrays between the two proposed antenna arrays would qualify as eligible facilities and could be processed administratively. Yeah, give us just a minute on the, on that question, yeah.
Certainly, well, she's searching for that, and I have seen a lot of different communities' cell tower codes or wireless communication facilities codes, and in Littleton, there's no particular requirement for, say, a concealed facility versus a non-concealed facility. And I think a lot of communities would consider this non-concealed because it's the pole with those sort of crow's nests on it. So just wanted to clarify that in this particular zone district in Littleton, that there is no requirement for a concealed facility?
No, there is no, you know, or a, a monopole type requirement, that type of thing. I, no, no, we don't have that, that particular requirement.
And this will be for the applicant, I think, and it's, without getting into some of the proprietary issues.
Sure, sure.
Notice popping up around the metro area are a lot more small cell facilities and the right-of-way replacements of poles, and in, in my day job, I sometimes have to talk to cellular providers who explain that those can help with some bandwidth issues, but you still need these larger sort of base stations to help facilitate the network communication. So if you could just talk about how this is the preferred option versus, say, a network of small cells?
Sure. And to answer that question, let's go back about five years. Five, about five years ago, small cells were the, the new toy in town, if you will. It was going to be the solve-all problems for everybody. And about two, three years after that, they realized, after they built a bunch of them, that the signal strength just wasn't going as far as it was anticipated. The problem with small cells, and if you go back, if you remember that picture that I said, you know, this AT&amp;T can put a total of 12 antennas up there, okay? On a small cell, you can only put one antenna. So that antenna has to have 3G, 4G, and 5G on one antenna pointing one direction. And that's it. That's all you're going to get out of a small cell. Whereas if you put up like this, you can get one antenna for 3G, one for 4G, and one for 5G for each sector, and there's three sectors that make a 360 circle. So you get a lot more coverage out of, out of the, what's called a macro tower, which this is a macro tower, than you will out of a small cell. Where they've realized that small cells are great is like in parks, where you're just trying to, you know, maybe get a, a trailhead or a parking lot, you know, or something like that. But that's usually where those, those have come in to, to being the most beneficial.
Thank you, and that may overlap a little bit with the question I had asked of staff. Appreciate that insight.
Yes, in response to your question regarding the location of towers, we do, we do ask the applicant to provide an inventory map of existing cellular towers. We also do ask for a third-party consultant to help us do the analysis on these applications. That third-party consultant is an expert in wireless communication facilities, and our, our recommendations or our analysis is informed by the information that they provide us. And in the map provided by the applicant, it does appear that there, there may be other towers in the area, but their server, their coverage does not overlap, and so our third-party consultant found that the additional need for co-location was appropriate.
And an additional correction to one of my statements. The code does say that where wireless communication facilities are located in areas of high public visibility, they shall, where physically possible, be designed to be concealed. And where not possible to be concealed, camouflage to minimize the, the profile through placement of equipment fully or partially underground, or by way of an example and not limitation located behind landscape perms. So, painting could be a, a, a way to camouflage. Concealment might be more like a, a monopole or a, or a, another structure like a pine or something like that.
And if I may say, say, if you're going to paint the tower, if that's a condition, which is fine, also make it a condition that you paint the antennas. Okay? So, well, I mean, I, I, if that's your intent, I want to make sure we cover the intent, so.
Any further questions for the applicant or staff? Seeing none, I will open the public comment portion of this public hearing at 7:03 PM. And we did not have anybody signed up for the public comment. Is there anybody other than the applicant in the audience who would like to speak regarding this item? Seeing that the applicant is the only person in the audience, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing at 7:04 PM. And see if there are any additional questions, and if not, love to hear a motion.
I'll go ahead and move. We approve resolution of the planning commission of the city of Littleton approving a conditional use to permit the construction of a 60-foot wireless communications tower in the corridor mixed-use zoning district for a property located at 711 East County Line Road.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rudulovich. Any discussion?
I think we might want to add the condition. I'll move that we add a condition to paint the monopole and the antenna a brown or rust color similar to the existing wood color to allow it to blend in with the background better.
We have a motion regarding paint?
It would be an amendment.
I was looking at this particular pole from the site, from the Broadway site. I thought maybe the painting should, the current pole is, is nice because it's about the height of trees, whatever, in the distance of the left. And so that brown pole looked kind of like a different color. I was thinking if you were to specify or request anything, that maybe that new upper story could be sky blue or light gray, because in a sense, changing blocking, setting it to two different blockages, visually it sort of does follow a tree line, I want to bring up a full map. A 60-foot full brown thing will look like a big rocky competitive stuff. Now, that's admittedly almost from the driver's perspective, I don't know, but I do think that's where this is most visible. The yards of the houses nearby, I don't recall seeing it from inside the Moore's shopping area, so I just thought maybe the, no, I thought we might want to consider two tones of treatment there instead of a single tone. It's just an idea, I mean, I'm fully in favor of some kind of thing. You can maybe do something separate.
I was going to say, so this other, I don't know if you see this tower, Santa Fe and C-470, if you like, it's got a brownish pole. So one, one other, we could be consistent and say, hey, all our, all our poles are getting stepped on.
And that's just, additionally, we may want to ask the applicant if that's even a possibility to match that, to, to do the two tones.
Yeah, if the applicant could...
Thank you, thank you. The answer to that is no. Yeah, it's got to be because they paint it all at one time, so.
It's like a consistency in like, light poles, and we can plant some 66-foot pines on the theater. Can I do it, get a little more of it?
No, so, no, I was just saying, there's one consideration, we're going to pick, like a, I don't know, we're going to pick a paint color. But so, another strategy, strategy could be, already the pole at C-470 in Santa Fe and match that with a pole color, so there's a consistency.
I looked at that, I thought that was a wood pole.
I do, that's why I asked, that's why I asked, because they could do wood and...
I mean, that's actually a solid color painting.
Yeah, it looks like a, the steeple pole.
Wow. That's good paint job.
Right. So Commissioner Coronado made an amendment, and it was not seconded.
Was that Santana?
Could we please clarify what the amendment was? Just, I guess, repeat.
Yeah, my motion was to paint the pole and the antennas a color of brown to most closely match the color of the existing wood pole. But there was been some discussion since then, so.
So a motion to amend the current motion on the floor, okay.
I should know it mentioned that. It looks like darker than that. Literally darker. I'm saying I'm in favor of painting it, I think just to add it. I'm in favor of painting it, I think it would be a good direction. So, I'm sorry, was it painted the same color as the wood pole that's existing? Yes. But I'd be open to changing it to match the Santa Fe and C-470 pole. It's what it senses.
All right, so we have an amendment, and if our, I think if the, the commission's preference would be to see it match the Santa Fe and C-470 pole, we could vote against this amendment. If the preference is to see it match the wooden pole that it is replacing, the vote would be thumbs up on this amendment. Any, any further discussion? Open the voting. This is on the amendment only.
The amendment to paint it brown.
Yes.
Matching the existing wood. The vote is six in favor, the motion carries.
All right, so we'll, we have direction regarding the paint color, and we'll return to the main motion, which was for the approval of PC Resolution 09-2023, I guess we should say as amended. Any discussion or comments in support or against the main motion?
Yeah, just a, a comment. I, I think having driven by there, there will be a, a bigger visual impact, especially driving eastbound on County Line with a pole that's almost twice the height. So I think it is important to somewhat conceal, I think the paint color, in my opinion, will make it much more palatable. But I could see it being much more noticeable, being above the treetops, and so with that, I would support it.
I'd like to say, this is an example of where I think our code, future amendments or input would be well served with the requirement that towers of tree height or larger be built as concealed only. This thing with the four additional arrays on it will look a lot like a tree, but also monochrome brown, and obviously not a tree. And that, I do think that these are high-profit, high-value objects, that there is probably considerable expense for any applicant building a tower, but over the long haul, these are national corporations making significant resources out of these things, and not unreasonable for a community to ask for good concealment of them. I know we don't require concealment for all sheds and objects, but cell towers particularly should be given a requirement of this, and that way, companies like AT&amp;T that are investigating development and placement of these things, factor that in that cost structure and anticipated revenue calculations to make sure that concealment is worth it. I never like to force an applicant at the last minute to do a very expensive thing. Something should be done at the code level. Just something to keep in mind for the commission's level when we go to another round. I will be supporting this.
Any other?
Yeah, I would agree with that. This might give me a drastic control level as far as doing concealment. That way, people know what they're getting into, what they're trying to place a, you know, a tower here. Additionally, these things are increasingly of need just because of the amount of phones that are out there and the dependence on them. I saw, I just looked up to see how many households just don't have a landline anymore. It's kind of a dippy number to try and find, but the estimate's about 50% of households don't even have a landline anymore, which means this is your emergency contact now as well. And in urban areas, that number's probably even higher. So, yeah, I, I'll be supporting this, and I do think concealment is, is a good thing though, in particular.
Yeah, I was going to say, I certainly seems, can't argue that there is going to be community benefit and the other criteria that's been out there to us articulated in staff report, I'm no issue, so I'll support it.
Yeah, and thank you, and I think, you know, appreciate staff's description of how Yeah, and thank you, and I think, you know, appreciate staff's description of how it, the proposed installation meets the, the criteria particularly about, you know, network availability. Appreciate the applicant's description of why small cells are not necessarily the solution that, uh, public perception has about small cell facilities. They're certainly useful in certain circumstances, as he mentioned, and like in downtown areas or dense areas. And, uh, one thing, uh, that staff also pointed out was that the proposed facility is, is well within the height limit allowed in this particular zone district, uh, which has a height limit of eighty feet, and they're proposing sixty. So I do plan to support the main motion, and are there, if there's any, no other comments, start the voting.
The vote is six in favor, the motion as amended carries.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any updates from community development, uh, director or staff?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Speaking of the code, recent code amendments, the codes, uh, were adopted by city council, the code amendments were adopted by city council on October third. Just wanted to keep you in the loop, uh, the, the buffer fence requirement, uh, was changed. There was a footnote that you all talked about of having a minimum six-foot-tall fence, though it's just changed to a six-foot-tall fence. And then stake signs were increased to, I believe it was five stake signs, except for a specific period between September and November where they're unlimited. So, uh, that was, we explored different options of how to do more signs on larger properties and things like that, and, uh, thought, uh, talked with our code, uh, compliance folks, and they, uh, rather than trying to measure properties, uh, during, uh, certain seasons where things are really busy, we thought it would be better to increase the number of signs, and then, and then other communities had unlimited signs during that period. So, uh, we thought that was a good, uh, compromise, and council agreed. We are working on future topics to appreciate the discussion tonight. Uh, we could certainly use some definitions for concealment and camouflage, which we do not have, so, uh, we can work on that. Also, the joint studies, uh, the joint, uh, study session with the Housing Task Force has been talked about quite a bit. We had some meetings, uh, just last week to, to, or was it the week before? To talk about the presentation, all geared up, but it's gonna have to be postponed to December eleventh, uh, because several of the Housing Task Force members were unavailable for tonight's meeting. And then our next meeting is, uh, November thirteenth, and, uh, we'll have a couple of public hearings ready for you on that evening, uh, so looking forward to that. And that was, uh, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Any commission member updates?
Thank you, Chair. As many of you may have heard, or some of you have not, we had a tragic death of a seventh grader in Littleton on the last week, um, second death on Littleton Street in the last year. I was very troubled by it, and, and, as you all know, very involved as a walking, biking person, and those issues are dear to me. There will be a, a rally being held this weekend, on Saturday, right in front of the Public Schools Headquarters, uh, five seven seven six Crocker Street. Just some bike riders wanted to come and, and ask that elected officials, both within the school administration, its board, and our city council, speak more clearly about their priorities for road safety and street design. And that's an issue dear to my heart, as you know. Um, I think it connects in some ways with the work we do, and even just in our last meeting, we had a back-and-forth with, uh, flat design that doesn't include sidewalks along the road. It is these kinds of, uh, sort of shortcuts that shortchange the safety of some people who might use a cord or something. I think it's something I want all of us to just keep in mind, and make shortcuts, um, for non-drivers or people on their home on the street without, and how terrible consequences. Um, and then in many projects, these kind of facilities are not hugely extensive. You know, I was, I was noting, as I biked on Windermere, also already existing, typical quarter, that, uh, bike lane that used to exist in front of the Little Raven School was removed and it's back to park spaces, so bicycles will go back onto roadway in Windermere there. Little things like that are just troubling. Um, and sometimes we, we don't have any say as commissioners on these things, but sometimes we do, and I think we all do that. Anyway, I'm hoping we can keep a real focus on infrastructure around projects as well. But that rally will be Saturday at Public Schools Services Center on Crocker at one o'clock this Saturday. I would welcome you to support and attend, you don't have to bike there, people with strollers would be, um, welcome to. Thanks.
Any other announcements? All right, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-one P M.